Welcome to the Shelburne Planning Commission on Thursday, March 12th. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve.
I will move it.
I will second.
Moved by Steve, seconded by Jean. Any discussion?
None.
Nope.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Now on to approval of the meeting minutes from February 27. Okay, a motion to approve these minutes?
Yes, I will move them to yes.
Moved by Steve.
No second.
Seconded by Jean.
Right.
And discussion. There was, before we get to page three, one more thing I wanted to read. Wait, where am I? Oh, yeah. Hey, Steven.
Hey, Stephen, how you doing?
Yeah, on page two, this might sound a little nitpicky. But under, yeah, you did. Under point seven, where it says, "Dean gave a brief overview of the basis for planning and regulations and explained reasons to have a comprehensive plan." And in parentheses, it says, "to have zoning subdivision and flood hazard regulations and the ability to apply for grants." I was wondering if that should say something like, "to guide," because the comprehensive, I don't know if this is just simply semantics, but the...
You have to have a plan in order to have bylaws?
Oh, so that's...
So, I mean, it makes sense the way that it is?
Good.
Okay.
No change. Then on to page three. The second-to-last sentence in the first paragraph. It says, "The removal of the node is one of the changes to form-based code forwarded to the select board, and this was done prior to receiving the proposal by CHT." Just, I feel there needs to be some clarity here because the timeline, the proposal from CHT or what they brought to the Planning Commission happened early on, so it's not that this was done prior to receiving the proposal by them. It didn't, it wasn't directly because of their proposal. I think it was when we got into our discussion about the lot. But the way this reads felt inaccurate.
Yeah, I kind of struggled with these because, right, this is the recap of what people said.
People said.
And, and we know that there is some discrepancy between perception and understanding with maybe how things actually played out.
You know what, that's a good point.
Do you know what I mean?
This is directly talking about what that presenter was mentioning.
And that's what I struggled with when I was reviewing these, was like, but that's what the person thought, I mean, and if I remember specifically, she was the one at the end, she was, we like, kind of redirected some things and she was like, "Oh, well, thank you for pointing that out."
Yep. Would you want to put a period after select board and then say an audience member?
Well, this whole paragraph...
But this whole paragraph is her.
I wasn't really thinking of it that way, I was thinking of it in terms of accuracy.
Use of the name in a context like minutes is pretty far removed. I don't know that most people, I'm not going to assume that something that is said there just based on paragraph structure is all attributable to that person.
Okay.
So, I mean...
Good, good point, because I, because I did.
Period, and then Ms. George said, or something like that, if that's, if that's the, if that's the person you wanted to take.
Yeah, I mean, I guess for accuracy, we could say Ms. George continued indicating that this was done prior, but I, I don't, the way I'm looking at it, given the various conversations going on, I just, I don't want to sow more confusion. I think my gut preference would have been just to remove the, "and this was done prior to receiving the proposal," because it's, it wasn't a cause-and-effect kind of a thing. It might be timeline accurate, but not, the two aren't related.
And I think that's fine if we're saying that it's not obvious that this whole paragraph is attributable to Ms. George.
I, I agree, yeah, it could be just that one sentence ends the paragraph, because there's those six bullet points, and then that could be like the seventh bullet point, and then starts a new paragraph, because basically that was, I agree with you, Steve, all that high-value commercial development is needed and so on, was our discussion.
Right. I think the paragraph actually should start where it says, "Jason clarified the Planning Commission does not approve any development projects," because I remember all the stuff up to that point was all stuff she said.
That's true, so insert new paragraph.
And then make the, then I think, make the clarification, Jason, that you're suggesting, because that makes sense.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you, Dean?
So, new paragraph starting with Jason clarified.
Yep.
And then, is there a period after select board? And then is there the reference to Ms. George? Or what?
Or select board.
I'd just say period after select board and leave it at that.
Okay.
Yeah, you mean...
And then remove the last sentence or leave that last sentence?
No, I mean, that, they did, they did ask for changes that we haven't discussed yet. That's...
So, the words from "and" to "CHT" would be...
Would be struck.
Right.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, I think that clarifies it a lot.
That work for you? All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, good talk. And then the, the last paragraph before eight, "select board," is just misspelled.
Yeah, yep.
And I would also, in that last sentence, what I was suggesting is that the public is urged to express their ideas and suggestions on economic development issues to the select board, not form-based zoning. Form-based zoning should come here first, anyway. But the point of that discussion was around economic development because they, I was indicating they had that process that was going to start up and...
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
That's it. Any other comments?
I think what you said was that form-based zoning amendments or changes will be submitted to the select board. That's what you said.
Well, there was that discussion as well, that we did come up with some amendments and forwarded them to the select board, but that particular conversation was in response to people telling us what should go into the spaces that need development. Like, no, what you guys need to do is bring in these kinds of businesses or service businesses, and that's not what we do. That is more associated with the economic development initiative that the select board's taken on.
To what Jean said. You, that last paragraph, you did urge them to express their, or to attend, or whatever, to go to the select board
to review.
While they're reviewing the changes that we've proposed to form-based zoning.
Yeah, I'm happy to add that in as well, because I know I said stuff like that, but in this specific thing, it was all around economic development.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I mean... Yeah. But yes, it is also true that we have made it clear that...
You could say urge the public to attend the select board discussion on form-based zoning amendments.
Yeah, I just don't remember when that might have happened in that meeting, and I didn't want to confuse the minutes.
Yep.
We're clearly on record saying that numerous times, so I'm not, there's no, I'm trying to change anything.
Is that, I, I would amend my motion with the changes as outlined.
All right. Motions to approve the minutes with these, with the discussed updates? Was that going to be a second?
Oh, second, yeah.
All right. Seconded by Steven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, welcome. Okay. So, any disclosures this evening?
No.
All right, and open to the public?
Crickets, I was in here.
Not a hot topic tonight. I have no doubts we got people watching at home, though. So then on to zoning topics, the possible warning of the PUD buffer requirements.
There's no sports on PUDs.
Right. Okay, we definitely had this discussion last time. Effectively, the same material is here, and then Dean, you also added a slightly...
Slightly modified version that addressed some issues, but you don't have to deal with it if you don't want to, but you could if you did want to.
So, the, just my, my perspective was the, sort of the original part all made sense to me, and the additional part, not so much.
Yeah.
So, I would, I would ask for just a, sort of a summary of what the intent is and how it, how it matches up.
Yeah, so, the, the intent is to remove some ambiguities that have been claimed or asserted in at least one instance where there was an appeal of a denial of a permit. So, it's to establish that we would, when we're talking about the buffer, it's not to be confused with setbacks. People have seen the existing language and have tried to make arguments that the buffer is really a setback, and therefore there are setback-related rules that apply, and that's not the way that the buffer is, is intended.
So, from the Department of Really Stupid Questions,
Sorry?
Can we, from the Department of Really Stupid Questions, can we define buffers and setbacks?
Can, setbacks is, are, they're both, they are both defined.
They are already both.
Yeah, they're already defined in the regs.
Would you do that for me right now?
Oh, no, off the top of my head, I won't, but I could pull it up.
Is it, is it buffer sides and back mostly?
The buffer is, is a peculiar, it's something peculiar to PUDs. A setback is the area between the edge of the right-of-way or a property line in the nearest part of the building. It's where the yard takes place.
Yep, right.
So, the front yard setback is the place within which the front yard exists. A perimeter buffer, a PUD buffer is something different. It's this area around the outside of a development that gets reviewed and approved as a PUD, and it has a different set of requirements related to it. There isn't a restriction in setbacks that have to do, for example, set fences can be allowed at the edge of a property, but they're not allowed in the buffer. And so, this is where we're addressing it, because we are, this would propose to modify the PUD buffer.
Yeah.
So, there, there are differences between setbacks and buffers is the bottom line. And so, this reworked version, which again, it's, it's not intended to be a distraction or to hold up. It just seemed like, well, here's an opportunity for people to see this, and if it was understood, and clearly it's not, then it could serve as a template for the other PUD sections because this problem exists in the other PUD sections as well. And maybe the thing to do is to just file it away for the day when you're going to attack the PUDs more broadly.
So... Dumb question, one A. So, but a PUD can have setbacks and buffers, right?
So, yes.
Right?
And the thing about, the thing about setbacks within PUDs is they're normally, a PUD is usually of a size that there's an area that you get past the buffer, and that's where a lot of stuff is happening. And then, within that, you have all of the normal rules that apply to yards and setbacks.
Right, right, yeah. So, I'm just, I'm just looking, so where it says, "See setbacks and dimensional requirements," do we ever mention anything about a setback in that section now if we're changing everything to buffer?
I'm sorry, so, "See setback and dimensional requirements"?
Yep.
What was the, the new setup?
So, I, I just quickly scanned, and I don't see where it's ever mentioned, referenced a setback, and I might...
And that would have been an omission, that would have been an error on my part, because it could have just said buffers and dimensional requirements.
Right, so if we're trying to clarify that, maybe, maybe, maybe make that change?
Yeah, well, I guess the question is, is does the, does the board really want to get into it, or really is your time better spent to just focus on the kind of, I mean, unless all of the technical issues having to do with the allowance of the walls is resolved, if there is no need for further discussion, then this is a meaningful conversation. But I, I thought maybe you would be talking about some of that, but maybe...
My personal preference is I thought we've kind of beat that to death. We've talked three meetings about, about how tall, how whatever, I mean, I'm happy to talk more if we want to and feel it needs to be fleshed out more.
I think you defined it well, to be honest with you.
But I think, Dean, I think it's, you know, that's really good information for me. I didn't know that there was confusion about the buffers and the setbacks with, with the folks who have PUDs, and if, if we can do a two-for-one here and, and clarify that at the same time, and we think we can do it, you know, relatively simply and we understand, I, I would say, why don't we try and do that? No?
Well, that was the reason for, for putting it out there.
Yeah.
But your intent here is to just be more precise and less...
Well, to clarify the whole buffer setback issue.
Less gray area.
It's to, to remove some, you know, with the exception of my failure to, to also make an edit to setbacks or, or add buffer setbacks and dimensional requirements. Yes, my intention was to address this ambiguity that has come up in cases where people have tried to argue that the setbacks and the buffers are basically the same thing, and I realize, I totally realize that a day could come before too long when there are no longer PUD buffers and all we're talking about is the setbacks. So, it could be a solution that has a short life.
Right, right.
So, we're adding buffers to Section C? Setbacks, buffers, and dimensional requirements?
That could be, that could be a way to handle it.
Yeah, where were you?
So, I'll go back to, with, with all that context, back to 1980.10, the retaining wall addition. And under D, the, the last sentence in B says, "Multiple walls not meeting the requirements of 1910B shall be measured in height as a single wall." And I guess my question was, if, if everything in this section is a requirement, how can a wall not meet the requirement of B? Like, we have all these requirements in here, and then we say, well, if it doesn't meet this requirement, then, I don't know, it just felt like, how do you not meet the requir, isn't this a requirement?
Might, if, if this is a question for me, my, my reading of this is that this is written in a legalistic way to prevent someone from circumventing the height requirement. Because there's a restriction on, on the height of walls, if you have language like this, it basically says, "If you don't follow the rules, then the town can always deny you or enforce against you because your series of walls would violate the height requirement, because it's considered a single wall."
Okay, all right, I see. Thank you.
I have a couple of things with that same section, 1980.10. In A, it says, "No retaining wall shall exceed 12 feet in height at any point." But then B goes on to talk about terracing of walls, and, and it defines a, a separate wall being one separated by its height in a horizontal distance. So, we could have a 12, by this, we could have a 12-foot wall, then move over 12 feet, have another 12-foot wall, move over 12 feet, have another, we could have a ginormous wall. I think A should say, "Except where further restricted elsewhere in this bylaw, no retaining wall shall exceed four feet in height at any point." I think that's kind of where we were thinking the last meeting, that it's better to have several terraced, smaller walls that a person could actually climb over rather than have to go around.
Right.
And that the, the B directly relates to that. It allows you to do four feet up, four feet over, four feet up, four feet over, four feet up. And it doesn't give a, a limit as to how high you could go by doing that system, but at least it's, it's a 45-degree slope in the end at, you know, whatever distance it has to go up in order to do what it needs to do.
But each wall would have to be minimum of four feet or maximum.
Maximum, yeah.
But then you can't put, if you need to put the walls closer than four feet...
You could never do it.
You could never do, because, because of the, you, you have to make it so that it actually holds something, right? And if they're too, too far apart, it may not have the structure or the structural, you know, strength to withhold the, why are you building the wall in the first place?
Yeah, they're, well, if they're too close together, yeah.
But if they're too far apart, they may not also, may not also work.
Well, it's fine, if you have a wall here and then like a wall over here, that...
It may not work. What was the reason for the 12?
If you have two three-foot walls that are three foot apart, you may have six-foot one.
My head hurts.
Yeah, but the, what was the reason for the 12 foot?
Well, 12 was the number that came from the community that this had been borrowed from, I'll note that this particular issue wasn't raised last time, so it wasn't edited. But I think it is, you know, it is a fundamental question of, will you, do you really want walls to always be low, or could they at some point, because remember, a 12-foot lot wall is not, it's not something someone is going to just casually do, or, you know, just...
There would need to be a reason for it, and anything over eight feet is a conditional use anyway, according to E.
Yeah, so, so at least the thinking had been before that the, that these restrictions on, on wall height would come into play as a function of distance from property lines or within, yeah. I mean, but the board's free to, to change that number and lower it if the prospect of a 12-foot wall being approved was just not...
How's, how's, how's the height calculated? Because most of the walls would be on a slope, right, normally?
Well, usually retaining wall... Well, no, a retaining wall is usually pretty vertical.
No, no, but they're on a slope, so your, your, your 12 feet, you know, is not calculated from the ground, and you're looking up 12 feet.
It's usually calculated from the low point, the low side.
The low side, okay, yeah. So, if you're facing the 12 feet, you're, you might have 12, there might, then there's a fence probably that needs to be built, I suppose, there.
But wait, when you're describing that, it looks like you're looking out over a wall and looking down.
Yeah, 12 feet, yeah.
But that's, right, I mean, there could be...
You're, you're looking down the slope, right? If I'm looking down the slope, and that's 12 feet from my feet, yeah.
It's going to be a 12-foot drop.
That's a lot, that's a big, but it could be what's needed because we have, you know, some parts of Shelburne are...
I, I like the flexibility of the way this is written, and Jason, I like that you pointed out in E that you need a conditional use approval if it's going to be higher than eight feet.
Well, we could make the conditional use approval higher than four feet if we wanted to, like, if four feet was sort of the level we wanted, that requires anything higher than that to do it. My one question, reading through the whole PUD again, it talks about connections between properties and allowing for paths, and, and I know that in a mixed-use set may be a little different from a residential area, but a 12-foot wall, an eight-foot wall makes that impossible where a four-foot doesn't necessarily interrupt that flow quite the same way. The fences, I had the same question about the fences, and I wasn't here for the whole discussion last time, but if you're thinking that the idea behind this is to have connection between properties, having walls lower and not having fences is very different from having big things blocking people crossing back and forth.
But we just have to remember that in a buffer of a PUD, there is this further restriction which says average height of four feet. So, the impedance of travel within the buffer is mitigated to some extent by the limitation on the average height of the wall in the buffer. When you get beyond the buffer, that's where it could start to scale.
Get really big.
But I just wanted to make it clear that in the, in the section 1930, it does say that retaining walls with an average height less than four feet, so we're talking about that buffer area, if we're looking at that connectivity, you're going to have a four-foot wall, which I think someone was saying that you could just kind of skip down over that. And you could, if someone wanted to do it in the buffer.
Still quite high, though, or a casual walk or jump four feet.
You guys are hurdleers, right?
Dean, where's that, where's that?
Well, this is, this is in that if you go to the section that is edited in either version, that paragraph four, under setbacks and dimensional requirements, or buffer setbacks and dimensional requirements, it says, "Fences and retaining walls with an average height less than four feet shall be allowed in the periphery buffer with the approval of DRB as part of a PUD approval or amendment." That's where you have limited the height of the walls and buffers. So, these 12-foot walls really are going to be more the exception rather than the rule, and they're not going to be happening in buffers, so long as you keep buffers.
Okay, so, these are, these are all...
So, this is just any retaining wall?
This is any retaining wall, right. This is the generic retaining wall. It doesn't, it doesn't, the, the stuff that's in, the buffer, the buffer stuff controls the buffer.
Does that exist, or is that new?
This would be new, this is, yeah, this is the new proposal.
Yeah, you're trying to define all retaining walls of any, you know...
Anywhere.
Any, yeah.
Yeah, because there could be situations where someone wants a wall,
Absolutely, yes.
And it's going to have a review process, it's going to have a different set of restrictions if that wall that they want happens to be in a PUD buffer. It won't be as tall, same length.
That makes, I, I think I was thinking about the buffers in particular, but that makes sense.
It's like, right at the, at the very beginning of 1980.10, A excerpt, is it supposed to be except?
I'm assuming it was supposed to be except.
Oh, yeah. Cool.
So, Dean, the 1980.10, that's...
A generic section.
A generic section for all retaining walls, anywhere, not just in PUDs?
If you, if you adopt it.
Yeah, because the PUDs is, the PUDs is defined here in, you know, 1937, C?
This would be a new regulatory territory.
Because we, do we, do we not have, right, that right now, there's nothing defining a retaining wall.
Yeah, the only, only walls that are addressed are C walls through their own separate...
So, in theory, anybody could do anything they wanted right now?
What else is...
With a retaining wall?
Well, it would be a structure, but there wouldn't be these kinds of restrictions on the height of that structure.
Correct, right.
Other than 35 feet of the overall height of a structure.
Right.
Which would be some wall.
Yes.
So, what else is in 1980? What else is in 1980?
Well, it's a, it's a section of miscellaneous regs, so it's got a smattering of different things in it.
Okay.
I can pull it up.
No, 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 I'm just curious, I mean, if it, are there definitions of other things related to retaining walls, or it's...
Not, not there.
Okay.
No, not related to retaining wall.
It doesn't fit anywhere else, I suppose.
That's where, that's the place where this kind of thing...
Where you would put it, yeah. I like it.
And what we're liking is the, the section that gets into buffer width, or the, that change?
I, I like Section C, the rewrite there of the, of the alternative, right, is that what we're calling it, the alternative version?
Yeah.
I like that Section C where it cleans up setback and buffer, and I like the definition, or the 1980.10 and the addition to definition section for retaining wall.
It adds in 1980.10 here. Or the other one does too.
And remember, just for context, this would be a decision to warn a hearing.
Correct.
Right, right.
Correct.
So, we can read it a fifth time and have new questions next time.
So, I have a question about the fences, how that got added in? Why? Because that was, that was the only part that gave me pause, and I'm sorry if this has been hashed out, I wasn't able to...
Yeah, no, you're good.
Went through stuff from last week, but not every single minute.
I would say, I'll say, we, we did talk about it, I, this time, the last time, I just looked at my notes from the time before and went that way. This time, I just went through it clean and then went back and compared, and I kept circling fences again, because for me, for some reason, that kept standing out. The, the last discussion we had, we did agree that keeping fences in there made sense.
Yeah.
Because once again, I believe, I'm sorry, but didn't, didn't you, we had a history where...
It has been the subject of this litigation and as a result, which doesn't mean, because when things get appealed, things are often distorted, and so it doesn't always represent a good reason to, to make a change, but this has come up, and people have said, "Why don't, why doesn't the town allow fences in peripher, in buffers?" And so, it was with that in mind that it was included in brackets in an earlier draft, and it was there, and it stayed there, it didn't come out, but if it had come out, it wouldn't have been the end of the world. It wasn't, wasn't part of the things that others were asking for.
I know I had to think twice about the fences too, Megan, but then when, what I came to is if two properties, you know, one here, one here, they each have a buffer, and they're not allowed to put their fence on the property line, then they, if they both want to have a fence, then they're both putting fences on, like, a good distance away from each other, leaving this no man's land that nobody would take care of between, probably, and that might just, you know, collect the garbage and whatever in there.
And I don't, I don't think it excludes the connectivity issue that, that you mentioned earlier, which is to say you can have gates and, you know, like, the idea of having connecting paths and that sort of thing, still, that's still there. It just doesn't need to, to, to eliminate that, but if somebody wanted to put a split, well, split rail fence on the property line to make it look, whatever, like a gentleman farm or something. I'd like to be a gentleman farmer someday, I would. I just lack the cash flow for it. But anyways, but if that's what you want, then you could do it. But anyways, but if that's what you want, then you could do it.
So Dean, just, just for clarification, that 50-foot buffer is in between two properties, right? So basically.
It's in between two PUDs, it would mark the edge of a PUD. So the situation Stephen just described would really only occur in those unusual situations, and I'm trying to think of them, where two PUDs are next to each other.
And are they, and are, is it 25 feet, the lines in the middle, there's 25 feet on each side, or is it 50 feet?
No, each PUD would have its own buffer, so whatever the specified width is for that, is for that PUD.
It's really 100 feet?
It's going to be, right, and in the case of two PUDs in a location where the buffer width is supposed to be 50, yes, it would be 100 feet total.
But in the case that we're, we were, that came to us from AutoMaster, I think?
They're not adjoining another PUD, so it's not.
No, but there's, there was still a buffer in between their properties, right? That's why this came out, right, the buffer?
There's, it is a PUD, so it's got a defined buffer, that's why we're having this conversation.
Correct.
Because that doesn't allow the retaining wall, and would be possible if this change goes through.
But in that case, that 50 feet is, is 25 feet on each side, or?
Well, I'm trying, it's not, I'm trying, you're, the 50 feet is, is it the larger number, that's not the width in that district. That's a bigger number than what actually applies there, I'm going to have to look it up.
But it's just on their side.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, right.
But still, somebody could put a fence on their property line if they were a PUD, and the PUD has to keep it, whatever, 50 feet away from that to stay out of the buffer, so there's still that nothing zone, and it seems like better to have just one fence in one spot.
Yep, right.
That all makes sense to me, and it's all goes through DRB approval anyway, right, the fences, and so it's not as though they're just going to be.
Yeah, it allows, I mean, we have to trust the DRB to be able to interpret the unique situation.
Without a license to build any fence anywhere you want, right?
Right.
That, those are my only questions reading over it, so thank you all for rehashing a little.
Yeah, certainly. Feeling pretty good about warning the, warning a hearing?
I am, yep.
All right, well, we do have the, gotta find the language, reports. Look at my notes.
So the second Tuesday, oh, sorry, second Thursday in April, what, I had left it in brackets, would be the ninth. That would be the earliest. You would also have the option of pushing it back two weeks and making it the 23rd, assuming we're continuing to have two meetings a month and meetings don't get shut down and.
Yeah, right.
And that, well, I don't want to hold up warning this one, but I was wondering about our next meeting, thinking there's going to be a large crowd here in two weeks, and the schools just canceled all after-school, everything as of today.
I think that's a topic we could talk about.
So I, I just, I know the community is preparing to show up at the next meeting, and I thought we should.
I was going to bring it up under other business, but there are discussions going on about that, and likely decisions to be made, so we can.
We can warrant this and then.
The date can be worn, and then if that date comes and it doesn't happen, then we post the sign that says the hearing warned for this date, meeting's been postponed, and the revised date is, we just can't put the meeting ahead of the date that it's warned. So we can set it for one date, and we can push it without any harm.
Could, could, is, is there any means to do that, like, kind of virtually, a meeting like that?
Maybe this is stuff we can talk about under the other business, because it's, because these are things that we're talking about.
Yeah, and I, I didn't want to distract us too much, and you might, there might be a real reason for this, but under, on the reporting form, the purpose?
Did I screw up?
No, 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 I don't, I don't think so, but it just says that the, the purpose of the proposed changes is to strike an appropriate balance between the interests of an individual property owner and the interests of the community as a whole. And I, I read that, and I, I guess in my mind, it just kind of went to, or it's to enact a change that better facilitates land use. But, because it.
Now's the time to edit it, so whatever.
Where, where do you see that, Jason?
Yeah, under the purpose, no, in the, at the end of the changes, down here.
And which were you concerned about?
This, what is it, second to last sentence that starts with the purpose of the proposed changes? That it's, I mean, I understand striking an appropriate balance between the interests of an individual property owner and the interests of the community as a whole, but it's also the changes that we're putting in, it's more just about facilitating better land use. I mean, I, I guess maybe this is with recent things in mind, but it's not necessarily about, this changes.
It's a little punitive.
It kind of, yeah, it's like the, the changes going in to allow flexibility to have the DRB be able to do what they need to do and have some, have a framework, it was less about, like, this would apply elsewhere as well, and I, I don't know, it was just kind of how it came across.
And you said more efficient land use, what was the phrase you used?
I, I just say that the purpose of the proposed changes is, is to enact, enact a, well, my line was to enact a change that better facilitates land use, and not that it has to be that, it was more just to, yeah, the way, the way I read it.
How about the, the purpose of the proposed change is to support best land use practices in the interests of the community as a whole?
Yeah.
Bingo.
Sounds good.
Support best land use practices in the interest of the community as a whole.
Yep.
And have that be the end of the paragraph, or was that just the sentence?
Instead of that sentence.
Oh, yeah, just instead of that, that sentence.
Yeah, the other one's fine.
Yeah, I like that. So, yeah, if that's all good, then, anybody care to make the motion?
Sure. Now read.
Yeah, go for it.
I move to direct staff to warn a public hearing to be held on April 9th, 2020 regarding amendment of the zoning bylaw. The amendment, if enacted, would modify planned unit development, PUD, buffer requirements for commercial and mixed-use PUDs in the mixed-use zoning district, as reflected in documents previously distributed and hereby approved for discussion at public hearing.
All in favor?
Excuse me.
Oh, wait.
If I may, I didn't hear a second, but if you would specify the alternative version?
Yes, specifically the alternative version.
Good clarification, and seconded by Neil, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then the next one?
Yeah, I move to approve the associated zoning change report dated March 12th, 2020, and direct staff to distribute said report and copies of the amendment proposal as required by statute.
Second.
All right, moved by Steve, seconded by Neil.
As an amendment.
Just make sure that as edited.
As edited.
As edited. All right, so moved by Stephen, seconded by Neil, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Woo-hoo.
So if we're all allowed to be here on the night, and it makes sense, we'll do that on the night. All right, now we get into sidewalks. Yes, sidewalks. I just need to get my.
What is the?
Go ahead. Brief summary?
What is the role of the planning commission here? This feel, reading through this stuff, it feels a little more like a select board thing, setting up funds and that kind of thing, and I'm just wondering what we're, what we're going to do with it. So, so it's on the agenda to have the commission have the opportunity to explore what would have to be a bylaw amendment. This is an example taken from the Burlington land use regulations. It is not a decision that would be made without the select board being on board, but it seemed like it was time to have a discussion that went beyond just something very superficial was, which was, let's just create a fund that developers could put money into, because it's going to take more than that. It is going to take an ordinance, assuming, or modification to the bylaw, so assuming there is the statutory authority for the town to do it, it's going to most likely take something like this, unless I'm very surprised and the town's attorney says there's a way to do it entirely outside the regs, but I don't think that's going to be the case. So it is going to mean that the select board, select board has to do with it. You may remember that at a meeting a while ago, Kate Lally, I think maybe even before she announced that she was running for the select board, had said that she would take this issue up with the select board, and so it's, it's on her mind at least, and it's on Lee Cron's radar to some extent, but it seemed like there should be a little bit more discussion here so that you have some idea, because if it was to be raised at the select board, and someone was to say, well, what do you mean? I'm not sure that the planning commission would be able to say very well, well, what does it mean? When it says this idea of having the regs create a way for a developer to contribute in to a fund rather than build a sidewalk.
Yeah.
So it's one of those things that, in concept, like when Brian, right, came, I, I kind of get it where he's coming from, like, you know, a sidewalk in the middle of nowhere, I mean, in a theory, right, if everyone developed in that street in the next two years, right, you'd have sidewalks everywhere on that street, right?
If they used Form-based code.
If, oh, right, if they use Form-based, so, right, I mean, you could have a sidewalk, right? So in that situation, I get it, but I guess what I'm struggling with is what are the perimeter? I don't want anyone to just be able to say, oh, I'll just pay so I don't have to do a sidewalk. Do, do you know, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I think that the point of this and the fact that we've got Form-based zoning as an overlay, and we also have traditional zoning.
Right.
The, the other document that was shared, a lot of my comments all related to, this, this would be a lot more intuitive if we had a unified bylaw, and like, we didn't have that split, it might be easier, but effectively, in the case of anybody using Form-based zoning that has certain restrictions, the sidewalk being, in this case, what we're talking about, it, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't make sense at the time of constructing that project to just build a sidewalk in front of three houses without knowing that, I mean, the, the statements that were made is that, and I think there was a neighbor there saying, yeah, nobody's going to develop any of this stuff on the street, it's just not going to happen. So it would make sense in that case to say, well, we do have this regulation, there could be in the future, that's the point of Form-based zoning, like, you're looking really long-term, it could be that that happens, so this would be something that at the discretion of the DRB, they could say, right, in this case, it doesn't make sense for you to do that, but if you put whatever the funds would be to do that into an account that could then be used for sidewalks, so that the town then has that at some point.
So then you're, you're, makes a decision then, in, in your mind, would make a decision on whether or not that sidewalk gets built?
Yeah, because, I mean, if you use that, his, that specific case as an example, he brought that to the DRB and just said, well, it doesn't make sense to build a sidewalk here, what do you want me to do? And then it came back here, which makes sense, and I know it's frustrating and takes a long time to figure this out, but.
Because the alternative, sorry, but the alternative would be that they would build a sidewalk, and then it's pointless, I suppose, in this, in some cases, or they would, but who decides what, what the amount of the sidewalks would, I mean, who decides the amount that put into the fund?
Well, it would be whatever the cost would be for that.
And that's.
And that's where the systems, like the things that we see in Burlington come into play, it's, it starts to get a little bit more, a little bit more complicated.
I get, Jason, I, I get that, I guess my question is, so let's say someone's building, and maybe the DRB wouldn't allow them that option, and I guess maybe that's the piece I'm looking, right, you know, you've got sidewalks, and they just like, I don't want to build. So, you know, I don't, for whatever reason, I, I'll just kick into this fund and not build this sidewalk. I mean, I don't want that to be an option.
I mean, looking at the way that those Burlington regs are written, there, there's some, there's some parameters, I mean, they, they have, they have to prove that there's no way that they can put parking on the site, and then it's, it looks expensive to me, I mean, I don't know, $8,000 seems like a lot.
Eight grand, going green.
Is it going ready for a parking spot? I do want to apologize because this is what I thought was the closest analog, and it's for parking, it's not for sidewalks, but I think that the, I think the gist is the same, there are some other states and communities in other states where they do it for sidewalks. I just wanted to point out that even though this is, this is for parking rather than sidewalks, the concept is the same. It applies to specific locations, so there may be places where you absolutely don't want a developer to have the way to pay to play and get, get away with it.
Right.
So the, the districts that this is a possibility could be limited to certain districts where.
Right.
And I can tell you that there have been cases before the DRB where there are sidewalk requirements, and they ended up waiving it. And it's the residential district on Spear Street, so that may be a place, if the history is any indication, that that may be a district where you would say, and maybe the mixed-use district somehow define it, and maybe you wouldn't give someone the ability in the village.
Right, right, okay, that's, that's. There's got to be parameters.
And I wonder if there are other things that such a fund ought, if it should be structured flexibly enough such that if there are other things that come up down the road, that the planning commission could say, this could go into a fund also. And I don't have a good, really good topic off the top of my head, but I don't know.
The waived development fund?
Well, trees, stormwater runoff, stormwater regulations, I mean, you can come up with all sorts of different regulations here, but if there's one thing or another that somebody's like, you know what, I can't do it, and the price, I'm imagining that the price, right, is such that, that it, it's no, it's not a net benefit for the, for the developer outside of they can't do it there. So sort of, if you can't build a sidewalk there, then write the $8,000, but if, if you could build a sidewalk there, and you just want to write the $8,000, so the town goes in and builds it there, do you know what I mean? It's like a net, there's no net gain to the, to the developer.
Yeah, maybe it should be skewed in the town's favor a little bit to encourage somebody to, to do a sidewalk. And it probably would be like a per linear foot of sidewalk, I would think, that, that the thing would be set up as, and we'd be able to get a, you know, a contractor, to, a sidewalk contractor, to give us a good estimate of that, but I think that would be something that would have to be upped every year to account for inflation.
Just where it gets tricky in legal, because there are legal principles that come into play where if the town can't see this as an opportunity to generate money, the amount that the town charge has, it has to be, there has to be a nexus, and it has to be rough proportionality, the town couldn't seize on these things as opportunities to essentially extort money. So it'd have to be careful about how much advantage it swings the town's way.
Oh, sure, I think it, it would be probably not just having somebody come in and build a sidewalk, that, that cost, but also account for the, whoever's going to, Paul Goodrich's time managing that project, and, and, you know, whatever other people in the town would be.
Should all be factored into this, whatever the dollar per foot cost is. I mean, if you look at the agency of transportation, they do these reports every few years, the cost to build sidewalks is close to $200 a foot. It's crazy, concrete sidewalks, it's crazy expensive.
That makes sense.
Fully loaded gas, it's not.
So that, that may be a thing that you put in, you put in the, kind of the top end of the sidewalk.
But it's, I mean, that's, that kind of thing is going to change over time as well, I'm, I'm wondering if that's something that we could, it, would that be reasonable to leave to the DRB?
Well, I think that this is where the advice of the town attorney is going to come in.
You have some experience there?
They have a system in Burlington where there are a group of people with a technical expertise, and it has to be updated. So it can keep up with inflation, and it doesn't rely on, you know, a board to just say, eh, we'll cut you a deal, or we'll take advantage of you, or.
How about we tie it to the agency of transportation standard?
That I was thinking, I don't know, a lot of that gets updated.
I think these are all really good things that could be explored if, when the next iteration of this, if this gels, that, that would be a logical source is the B-Trans cost study.
I also think, keeping it at the cost of building it makes more sense to me, like, the one example we heard, the developer was coming in because the neighbors really didn't want it, for him, it was a wash, and he's building anyway and ripping anything out, and so if it's going to cost him more to put in for the town, that might dissuade him from doing it at the detriment of the neighborhood.
That was going to be my argument sake, argument to you, is that he, like, he's happy to do it, it was the neighbor saying, just pointing out, this doesn't make sense, you're going to have a sidewalk in a place that you don't need a sidewalk.
Couldn't in this case, what prevents them from just, you know, assessing the cost and sending that cost to the town, and, you know, civil works fund or something, you know, just general construction fund, or, is, is there such a thing, or?
Seems like it should stay with the sidewalk fund or some kind of thing.
Although I like your idea, Neil, and concept, it does seem a slippery slope of having a general fund, you know, that could, well, no, you were saying if it was, right, okay, wait a minute, right, so you were saying if it was a sidewalk, but let's. So you were saying if it was a sidewalk, but let's say it was a different project where there was something that was required that was just impossible to do as well.
So let me rephrase what my intention, sort of like, instead of calling this a sidewalk fund, call it a development fund or whatever, which will be used for this specific purpose of sidewalks. But if in three years, the Planning Commission said, you know what, people are really struggling with these, whatever, some other regulation, I don't know what it is.
Trees, I mean, trees. If people are really struggling with trees and planting trees, or there's someplace that they just can't plant trees because it used to be a brownfield site or something like this, then you could put your $1,000 per tree into this development fund, you know what I mean? So it could be, it could be used for similar projects.
Because in this case, what, I mean, it's assumed we have all the sidewalks we need in Shelburne, right? So putting more money into it, you know, we're not, you shouldn't build something that nobody wants, right?
That won't be the...
Which is fair, there's always going to be money.
We'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Pay that road that's not paved or something.
I think there are some people that don't want sidewalks and some people that really want sidewalks.
I want sidewalks.
Yeah, me too. I think it should stay with sidewalks. I don't think, because a sidewalk, I mean, a tree doesn't help me, you know, walk my future grandchild to the library or something. It, that's not going to help me. But a sidewalk somewhere will.
Are you?
And I think it, and then if my grandchild is a chimpanzee, yes. A tree would help that grandchild.
Okay.
But anyway, I think it should stay with sidewalks and I think it should stay with new sidewalks, rather than, like, go into the town's maintenance budget for repairing existing sidewalks. It should be, the idea should be, you know, just like it's in there, right now, in the form-based code, it's encouraging more sidewalks in the places where it makes sense.
I'm not up to date with our sidewalk percentages, but I guess there are certainly areas that we need sidewalks, I suppose.
Again, I really do think that there's value, Neil, in what you're saying, because trees, and trees is a great example. One of the, one of the DRB meetings I went to in the last several months, they were, I want to say it was one of these where the, there was a requirement for trees under this development thing, and there was a huge discussion about, well, it doesn't really make sense, what are we going to do? It says we need trees, but do we? And that's the exact same thing happening with the sidewalk. So it's pretty much for things that, what we would be doing is defining specific things that could be waived, and a condition of that waiving would be a contribution to a fund that goes towards putting in those things. Like, that's ultimately what we're doing.
Right. And it wasn't my intention to be like, oh, we use the sidewalk funds to plant trees. That wasn't my intention. My thinking was, there's just, it's a development fund, but if you're putting in money for sidewalks, then we build sidewalks. You put in money for trees, we build trees. You put in money for stormwater, we build stormwater.
So there's different categories in that fund.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, you'll have to keep the funds separate.
Right, that, so...
Conceptually.
That's right. In concept, I agree with it, it just seems like a little slippery slope and government doesn't always have the best track record for using funds as designated. Not saying Shelburne, I'm just saying...
Peter keeps us under contention.
That, that the perception is that...
I just, I wonder if there's a way, if we go ahead with something like this, that the lawyers could write in, you know, possibility for adding or changing in the future. So this is for sidewalks based on, and maybe in our discussion, we find another thing or two that we somehow want to include. But it sounds like we're more, like, I like the idea of there may be other things that come up and if we're going to go to all this trouble, could we use it? But is there a way to sort of leave that door for if there are future things that the Planning Commissioner or Select Board feels are appropriate to have a fund, it can be renegotiated to somehow change or add down the line?
Yeah. Would that be a slippery slope?
This is my legal training.
Feel like it'd be a slippery slope.
I don't think that it's going to have to be written in a way that it says what's required. And you can't, I don't think you can write it in a way, or I don't imagine the attorneys would recommend it be written in a way where it's open-ended. It would just, they would end up saying, yeah, if you want to have a different fund, just amend the regulations. And whatever the requirements are for the creation of a fund, and there may be slightly different rules for each type, then those things will be done. I think that the idea of avoiding an amendment is kind of like, not worth it. I think there would be an amendment if we learn after a period of time that in addition to a sidewalk fund, we also need one for landscaping, or we also need one for parking, or whatever the, whatever the capital item is.
Well, in this particular case, there, I think there was, part of it was a sidewalk and part of it was street trees that was recorded by form-based zoning in that case, I think. Wasn't that the case?
That's form-based zoning.
See, but there have definitely been cases...
This is more residential, right?
I mean, even if it wasn't this one, there have definitely been cases where trees have been questioned on whether or not they're needed. And that's interesting, I had a whole dialogue in my head, I think, when you raised that, because it, on the surface, it made sense to say, well, it's a fund and, I mean, those things tend to be controlled by the Select Board, so at the Select Board's discretion, should they choose, they could reconfigure that fund to add different things. I mean, that would be the intention. But then I started going into, well, is that a slippery slope? Because depending on the Select Board and how funds get changed, that could all get changed into, all right, we're saying this could be a general fund. Not that they would, not that the current board would do that, but it's, I was looking at it from an efficiency standpoint, saying, well, alternatively, you'd have the Planning Commission, somebody would bring that to us and say, hey, it would make sense to have, to add a line item for trees or whatever the other item is. And then we would have to warrant a hearing, have the hearing, send it to the Select Board, they have to warrant a hearing, have a hearing, and approve it. And you're, I mean, you basically are adding months to something that, in this case, as using Brian's project as an example, he brought this up in the fall and said, yeah, I got time, you know, the project would happen probably in the spring. And just because of the mechanics of the way things work, here we are, it's already early March.
I talked with him yesterday, by the way, so...
Well, yeah.
He's still going ahead, but, he and I did talk about this.
But I do think that there's merit to figuring out how that process could be shortened, because just workloads build up and you can't guarantee that you go from warning, hearing, having it in a timely manner, and then getting it to the Select Board and they hear it at their next, or they warrant it at their next one. Like, these timelines can get really expanded.
I'm getting into the deep end of the pool, but I think that one of the reasons why the Burlington ordinance is written the way that it is, with all of this overhead and these very tortured references to the fund and the contribution to the fund, is because legally, that's what's necessary. And that I can't imagine that you're going to avoid having to amend the regulations because you're going to have to go through all those steps to create the fund and have all of the stuff that you need to have in place in order for it to be a legitimate part of the regs. Because these things get really dangerous when they start to become like taxes and you end up double taxing, and when they're fees, but they're not following the impact fee statute, it is something that could be tricky. And I think that this is probably, like I said, it's hopefully not going to be something that can only happen because Burlington's charter says it can happen. Because if it hinges on that, then we may need a charter change.
How did they get into that situation? Were they approved to build those lots and they had to build a sidewalk and then they figured out after the fact that it wasn't used there?
Well, Burlington is parking.
No, no, I'm not talking about Burlington, I'm talking about these three guys with these three lots that...
Brian Precor, he's going through...
Form-based.
Yeah, he's going through form-based zoning.
Oh, it's form-based, okay.
And the thing about form-based zoning, although both regulations, the regular regulations and the form-based, say that in certain situations, you're supposed to have sidewalks. So you, I think you want to consider what part of the regs it's going to go in, or maybe you have it in twice because you want it to be available both under form-based zoning...
And he could get...
Wasn't this the guy by building homes?
Yeah, but he could get more units, right?
He gets three units under form-based zoning, only two under conventional.
Under his proposal.
So he has an incentive to use form-based zoning.
Sure, okay.
And it's also reasonable to recognize that it's at the end of the street and having a sidewalk right there arguably does not make sense.
Kind of a, yeah, an island.
And another way of looking at this, too, is it, like, well, why is this a requirement in the form-based zoning? And maybe you tailor the requirements in the form-based zoning to say, oh, well, here's a little map that we're adding to form-based zoning, which is the sidewalk requirement map. And so that's what the regs say, you look at first to determine if you have to build a sidewalk, because you're going to be more specific. Because right now, the issue with form-based zoning is it's saying if you do development in the district, it doesn't get tailored for the more outlying parts of the form-based zoning overlay.
Because this is just, it's on, it's just adjacent Route 7, I think, right?
Well, it's several lots, yeah, it's like halfway down the street.
Right.
Could we let the DRB decide if it can be waived outside of a certain line? Like, we could, we could say sidewalks have to happen here, but in these residential areas, the DRB has the ability to waive.
It would be waivable, right. I mean, that's...
Couldn't they build, how long is the gap between, for that sidewalk?
It's like five houses.
To connect the island to the mainland.
It's about five, five houses, I guess.
Couldn't they build that and on top of that?
That could easily be built, but I don't think we should make the developer...
There wasn't plan.
Yeah, why would we make the developer put on a sidewalk from halfway down the road to the Route 7?
That's where these legal concepts that we refer to as rough proportionality, that the burden that you're placing on the developer has to be proportional to the impact they're having. So they may be, you know, 2% of the total foot traffic, but you'd be making them pay 100% of the cost of that sidewalk. It's not roughly proportional, so...
And other people are also giving a part of their front lawn to have a sidewalk built.
It would be in the right of way, so it is, but politically, it becomes difficult to navigate.
Right, but if you don't have a sidewalk there now, those people think of it as their fault.
Unless the town says, we're going to build the rest, which...
Unless the town would say...
And I think even outside of this particular neighborhood, it's something that could easily come up other places. And you could end up with little scattered sidewalks. And we're not that big of a town, growing that quickly, to think that they're all going to fill in instantly.
Because form-based zoning was kind of meant for this type of development, if I, right? It was more meant for mixed-use than, this is only residential, right?
It's in that neighborhood, it's in that district.
It's also seven, it's in the corridor, yeah.
It's meant to be there.
I kind of like that, Meg's, or, right, your idea of, like, or maybe, Dean, you said it, that to look at maybe amending, having like a sidewalk map and saying, and leaving it to the DRB to say, these are the areas that you could make that, you know, waived back.
So we just have an overlay to the overlay.
Right. Well, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it just, this just seems like a really huge project to do this, you know, if I look at what Burlington's done for the parking and, you know, updating the cost and, I, I don't know. It seems, it also seems like a, I totally get what you're saying, totally, whether it's a general, not a general fund, but a fund that has specific projects or if it's a sidewalk fund, I just think it can, the perception and the slippery slope can be out, it's just another way of taking money in here, even though I know the net is, you know, you're going to pay one way or the other.
Is there another...
I think we have to be cognizant of perceptions.
Is there another benefit or another structure or something they could build instead of the sidewalk that would be beneficial to?
Well, not according to the...
Like putting trees or something, I don't know.
Yeah, not according to the zoning. Like, the zoning requires sidewalk and that.
One thought that was tossed out was taking that same length of sidewalk and just moving it down so that it's connected to the Route 7 sidewalks. Now, that puts it in somebody else's front yard, but it still doesn't make an island of it. Gets people, you know, connected to Route 7 sidewalk system once they get within three houses of the end, you know, of that end of the road. And there's some merit to that, I think. I mean, I can see people not wanting, you know, somebody to put a sidewalk in, in front of their house sometimes. I would welcome it myself if I were in that case, but I can't put myself in their shoes. But I think there's some merit of just offsetting it so that there is connectivity and then things can be spread out down the road, but that's a tricky one, too.
Which kind of the sidewalk to nowhere, to no way, too, unfortunately.
What would that look like, though? Because if you shifted it, it would go, as you said, it would go onto somebody else's property. So would that be something that your proposal would have the DRB say, well, there is a requirement for sidewalks, potentially there would be the option of either contributing to a fund instead of having the sidewalk? Or would it be the DRB that negotiates with the neighbor next door to say, can you shift? Like, that gets messy, too, it seems. I would imagine if, I mean, if I, if I, it sounds like you lived in that neighborhood and it was my property that, yes, if you shifted the sidewalks a little bit and that would enable connectivity to get to someplace else, I would probably be for that and say, yes, I support that. Like, I might not want to contribute to it, but...
But let me ask you, so...
It's going to be very individual.
We need a, go ahead.
Can we just say, as part of the regulation, if it doesn't fit in this particular neighborhood, then the developer will negotiate with the town manager to find a place within the town to build that many linear feet of sidewalk.
Wouldn't it be similar to just have a fund, have the commitment on the part of the town to actually make that investment?
It would be, but this also sounds, but this sounds, it seems like a lot of work, too. I mean, to Stephen's point, and I'm very sensitive to that, which is part of why I was like, well, maybe we should use this for other things, too, because it feels like, well, we're just going to be using this for one or two houses over the course of the next 10 years, and this is a lot of work for that. So then we'd have this fund which has, you know, $10,000 in it, and what are we going to do with $10,000? We're going to build a few linear feet of, I don't, you know, it just doesn't, it, there's not a lot of bang for the buck here. It feels like, I mean, I like the idea, I like the idea.
Yes, I agree.
I would love to see this happen. This sounds, it seems like a lot of work.
I like the idea of negotiating with the town manager and that...
Go find a place to build 50 linear feet of sidewalk.
But are you, are you committed that it has to be built?
Yeah, and then you...
I think, I think there should be a commitment that it has to be built.
Because I've seen too many times where, you know, that it doesn't. You know, someone says, I can't do it, I need my CEO, how about if the town takes $500 for this crosswalk that I'm supposed to have in place before I get my CEO? And then, when's that crosswalk going to be painted? I mean, it's, if the idea is that it will be negotiated and it will instantly happen, there will be all kinds of things that keep it from happening. No, seriously.
I hear that, yeah, all right.
Right. I mean, it's such a tough, because you also get the developers, like you say, oh, yeah, I gave that $8,000. I have no idea, there hasn't been a sidewalk built in Shelburne in five years. And I don't want to have that issue happen either, right?
This is also looking, the bigger thing, going back to my initial comment, that this would be less of an issue if we had a unified bylaw and there wasn't the, because in that particular, on that particular street, if the other neighbors on that street, let's just say hypothetically, they all decided, hey, we're going to redevelop, too, but they're not going to use form-based zoning, so they don't have to do a sidewalk. Like, that, if they, if you looked at it as everything in this district effectively fell under form-based zoning because that is the de facto, then you could look at it as, well, long-term, as, on whatever that long cycle is, things are going to eventually change and that's where these things come into play. But if, and I think that's the crux of that decision of going to a de facto form-based zoning, at least to start there before we get into the more unified stuff, so that there isn't the choice that creates this confusion where people can make the argument to say, well, it's not necessarily ever going to grow that way because you don't have to develop using those rules.
I think the big issue that you're confronting exists in both regulations and would very well exist under a unified bylaw unless you address it by creating some allowance. And I included this material in the packet and didn't go beyond the idea of material that would help you consider a fund, but there are, there are ways that you could address this problem that are more surgical, such as by having language in the form-based zoning that says, the sidewalk requirement doesn't apply to single-family residential developments of three or fewer homes, or something like that. Or a map, or...
You end up with a neighborhood without sidewalks, that then the town, eventually, You end up with a neighborhood without sidewalks, that then the town, eventually, if people lobby and say, we want sidewalks with streetlights, then the town is on the hook for that and we don't have a fund that has been contributed to.
So this is where the idea of impact fees comes in. Because impact fees in the Vermont system are the place where municipalities are supposed to get these funds to do exactly what you're saying. We set a, we have a system and that's where we collect the money and that's what we use to build the sidewalks to do what you said.
So can I just ask a clarifying question? Because I'm hearing Jason say the sidewalk issue is because it's form-based. But I think I'm hearing you say.
Well, this development is a form-based zoning project and it requires it, so it is form-based zoning. But it has also come up in traditional zoning.
Okay, right.
Which requires sidewalks.
Well, in some places sidewalks are required, in other places, there's not the same requirement, a little bit of wiggle room, but the issue is the same, essentially, that their language says there should be a sidewalk and people say, it doesn't really work here.
So, so there is flexibility in the, the, the form-based zoning then to exclude the sidewalk in exchange for something else? Because there would have to be an amendment, right? So there would have to be something amended.
Is this cul-de-sac the only, I'm trying to remember the maps, predominantly single-family kind of residential in, in the form-based, in that Route 7 corridor?
No, there are, there are some others.
Yeah, the regulating plan is.
I mean, I live in Hoacres, I don't think it goes all the way up into Hoacres, does it? So like, if I did, if I built a new.
There's a certain distance.
You know?
But isn't it more on the west side?
It is more of an issue on the west side, because the west, west boundary goes more in line with the tracks.
Right.
So you have, you do pick up several neighborhoods that have the situation that you have on Maplewood.
So it seems like the idea when the form-based zoning was written up was to encourage development of a denser variety in that whole area, all between the tracks and Route 7. And so I, on the, I'm like leaning to the side of, it's really complicated. We're seeing to set up some kind of a fund or offsets or impact fees or something like that.
Private exception for this.
Maybe we just require it and then it will maybe fill in.
At some point.
At some point.
Which is what started this whole thing, though. I mean, it's, I think if, I think if any one of us were in that neighborhood, even if we said, yeah, okay, sure, go ahead and do it, I understand the reasoning behind it, build the sidewalks, it still wouldn't look right.
Why doesn't he build on the traditional zoning?
Because he wanted an extra unit.
He can get more density, more units under form-based zoning than he could.
But they're individual houses or they're multi-town homes or something?
One, three, single-family homes rather than two.
He's going to get three units instead of two.
So that, in a way, would look, that would look odd someday if the other lots fill in with larger lots and, right? In a way.
Well, at some, at some point, the town will come in and fill it in.
Yeah.
No, I mean, that's what will happen. I mean, maybe at some point, another, another house will, will build a little sidewalk and then the rest of the neighbors will be like, you know what, we got these two pieces of sidewalk. We'd like to petition the PATHS and REC committee to help us build the, build the rest of this out. And it will get built out, I suspect. I mean, I think it's a long-term sort of thing, but it's, that's not a near-term solution. But it may well promote long-term sidewalks getting built.
It's definitely a, it is definitely a long-term kind of thing, but this, this started with the discussion of, well, should we just have a waiver because a sidewalk doesn't make sense in that case? And at least from my perspective, not that I wouldn't trust the DRB necessarily, but if you're in a position and there is an option to waive something that in that moment doesn't make sense, you're going to waive it. Like, and I wouldn't blame them, like, that's what I would do, too. And so the idea of a fund came up to say, well, it may not make sense now. So the DRB may very well say, yeah, we agree, this should be waived, you shouldn't have to build the sidewalks. But we also wanted to make sure that sidewalks may eventually be built there. There may be other neighborhoods where sidewalks could be built and that was where the concept of the fund came in.
Could, could there be kind of a, I'm, I guess we, I like the idea of a fund, because it's, it's required, so the money goes to something beneficial eventually. But what if there's a clause in there that, because you don't know who the owners of these houses are yet, right? I assume.
Right.
So what's, let's say these three individuals or these three families want a sidewalk that's cut off from the rest of it. I mean, that's, just imagine. So that they would have the right of first refusal to build that sidewalk with that, that money? If, if it wasn't a fund, right? And they would say after two years, you know, within five years after the site, you're going to use that for, build a sidewalk or, maybe the rest of the street fills in by then.
Those, those residents would be welcome to go and lobby, I guess that would be the select board at that point, maybe? I don't, I don't even, I don't know how that works. But it would have to lobby the town to say, hey, we want a sidewalk in front of our place. And then, at that point, somebody could say, hey, well, guess what? We've got funds in the thing, if you guys are all cool with it, we'll do it. And then the neighbors might object because it doesn't make sense, or they don't. But we, we can't pretend to know what any of that looks like, we just have to create the framework to allow it.
We're making an exception, right? It's another exception to form-based zoning by creating this fund, but, right?
It's not in, well, however you want to look at it, I mean, it would be.
It's an amendment, or it's a.
Well, it would be a waiver.
Well, we would have to add language, yeah, yeah.
Modifying.
But alternative, the way it is right now, if no decision is made, form-based zoning says that Brian's project has to develop, has to build sidewalks, he's already said that he'll do it. And so there will end up being three houses at the end of a street with a sidewalk in front of it in a neighborhood where the neighbors, at least one or two that came and gave their input, have said, we don't want, the sidewalk doesn't make sense there. So, I mean, what do we do?
Maybe those three houses have families that kids are out there playing soccer.
Does the sidewalk belong to a Shelburne?
Yeah.
Who does the sidewalk belong to in that case? Does it belong to the town or is there like a?
Sidewalks in the right of way would be under the town.
The town's jurisdiction, so they maintain it, take the snow off.
Yeah, are they going to have to go plow three houses?
It's going to be like every other sidewalk in town, it raises these issues and, you know, this is a constant, constant battle, you know? What's the balance between the maintenance that's done for cars versus done for people that are not in cars?
I don't know, I mean, I know I've said this before, the fund is clearly not an easy thing to set up and it doesn't have to be that, but I just, I feel pretty strongly that making people put little patches of sidewalk doesn't, I get really long-term, maybe it'll fill in, but I feel like in the short term, it's going to look funny. Neighborhoods are not going to like it and it's not furthering our cause of trying to create a walkable town. If I was someone seeing these patches of sidewalk going up with no context, I would just say, the town doesn't know what it's doing, that's not how it's supposed to go. Like, I live near Falls Road and the new sidewalk that goes down to the falls is wonderful and people walk down there all the time and it's useful and it makes it safer and better. And that's personally because I live near there. But it's a very useful piece of sidewalk and I'm sure there are other neighborhoods where useful pieces of sidewalk could go in. So if we want to encourage walking pedestrian access, I feel like patches of sidewalk around the town doesn't do it and it is detrimental to property owners potentially.
So I may have done you a disservice by not making it clear enough in my memo that what I see as an outcome of a discussion like this one is an indication that, yeah, we really do want to investigate this, because we're, we're not calling up the town's attorney for every possible little question. But it sounds like there's been enough discussion tonight that if, that I could go to Lee and report and say that Planning Commission had this really amazing discussion of this topic and it really warrants us spending some money with the town's attorney to answer the question, because my memo did say, you know, our ability to do with something like this has not been confirmed. But there's been enough discussion to warrant having Brian Monahan's office spend some time to confirm it. And that at least gives you something.
I, I, I would, I would agree. I, I, I'm right there with you, Meg, as for your thoughts about, about that. And, right, and if, Dean, you're pointing out that, you know, even if we, even if we were all happily in agreement, yeah, yeah, I mean, it doesn't, we don't even know if we could do it.
I'm not sure that you can do it, yeah.
Right, so.
He can do it.
That we could even establish this fund, we have to get our, we have to get the town's attorney, you know, he needs to opine.
Yeah, I think it might be just a real difficult thing and to go back to the Falls Road. I mean, that Falls Road section that just got filled in, that was like a big fight over many years. And I, like, like, you know, we all, like, for 20 years were fighting for that. But, but that stopped even sooner than where it just stopped before. And it was a matter of just filling in sections of sidewalk, little, like, 100 yards by 100 yards to get to the falls.
Separately? Or slowly adding to it?
Separately, slowly adding to it, yeah, not some, an island in the middle. So that's where, you know, I think, I like the idea of connecting to Route 7 and then going three houses in rather than saying it, it can go someplace else or in some fund or something like that. Because eventually, you know, it could connect and then.
That would connect the, the form-based zoning, that would make logic.
I'm going to put devil's advocate on that, Stephen. I think, you know, the falls, there's a reason to get there, right? I mean, this is a cul-de-sac, it's a residential cul-de-sac.
There is a reason to get to Route 7.
There isn't, there isn't, it's a cul-de-sac, I mean, it's been a cul-de-sac for 60 years. People walk, ride their bike, I mean, I ju, I don't see how a sidewalk on that cul-de-sac is going to improve connectivity. It's already connected.
Well, it will connect so that people don't have to walk down the road, which, or, or through the grass, which is fall, what happened with Falls Road. And, and there was lots of opposition saying, we don't want sidewalks, we don't want this to be New Jersey, which has sidewalks, you know? As if that was a bad thing.
Right, but Falls Road isn't, isn't, isn't a cul-de-sac. It's not a quiet little neighborhood, that's a, that's a thoroughfare.
I don't, I don't think that we should focus on, on that road. I think we should focus on the overall sort of, you know, no matter where these things are brought up, is this, is it a good thing to have a waiver or a fund or just to force somebody to build it in the, in the middle of the road, right? As an island? I mean, that's the issue.
Well, I guess and no, I mean, that's why he's proposing is because he's saying it's in the middle of a residential, you know, and the neighbors don't want it.
It could be on Bacon Drive, right, which doesn't have any neighborhoods, so he could, he could be there and it, which is very connected. I mean, there's people that walk around there all the time. And it's the same, but it's the same fundamental issue and it would, you know, to your point, it would, it would be odd to have it right in the middle for years and years waiting to be filled in.
But I do really like sidewalks, I mean, I think it's a fair positive thing, I don't want to just.
Oh, I, I agree, I agree.
The pressure off on that, I just don't want to.
Well, and that's why just having a simple waiver didn't make sense.
Yeah, I don't like that, that's my least, that's my least favorite.
The fund, I think, is a, a good default option. I mean, to be honest, it's better than not doing anything, honestly.
Yeah, so given this discussion, the, the concepts that we're talking with is a good next step, just to make the inquiry?
Yeah, I think that's.
Yes. You know, if you want to reinforce it with a note to Lee, I'll tell him, but you can say that you spent a good hour plus talking about it.
Great discussion.
This raises the point, just out of curiosity, related to, it is a sidewalk question. So Quiniaska, they're building houses there, right?
Yes.
So does that plan get approved, it has to have a side, I'm, I'm not, don't live there, but I'm just asking.
There are sidewalks on parts of it, there's a path that was the primary thing that I'm remembering, but, yeah.
Okay.
Will there be a sidewalk that connects it to Webster Road?
The, the path is going to run a long spear down to the, to the path that exists on Webster.
Yeah, yeah.
If I'm remembering it correctly.
I mean, that would be logical.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is great.
18.
Yeah, yeah, good, good thought, connectivity, that's great.
Well, this might be one of those rare occasions that we have an opportunity to wrap soon, but we do have things under other business. Are, are we okay under that, are we good with this topic for now?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no, that was, that was good.
That was good.
I know, right?
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Stick with our.
Yeah, thanks for that, though, that was a good, good discussion. So there were a couple of things, since you had brought it up earlier, the whole issue around coronavirus. There are definitely discussions happening, I have my own thoughts as well. And we have been seeing, just as a general observation, that given incubation periods and things, it should be reasonable to expect more cases are going to come and more closures are going to happen and more complications. So as Dean, Dean referenced, there has been discussion going on and I, I can't say what announcements are being made. My, my thought when it came up was that our next meeting, we are expecting, I would expect to have a larger group. And given the current circumstances, that's not ideal to have that. I don't know that I'd want to make a call now necessarily, because I think that there's local and regional decisions that are going to get made that would just influence that first. But that would certainly be a, a consideration as it gets closer.
I, I would just say, I think as much as obviously nobody knows how things are going to go, but to give people as much time as possible, since there's a fair amount of organizing around that meeting. So if it were a week out and there's no larger decision, maybe we all have to make a decision. So we're not telling people last minute.
And, and that's good to hear, because my thought, there's a thread today and I don't know if this part of my answer made it in or if I cut it in my edits, but, yeah, the, the idea that just recognizing that I know there's a lot of discussion happening and towns are making decisions and so I, I didn't want to say, all right, well, somebody make a call now, we got to know, because it is two weeks from now, right? But we would want to, like, at least a week ahead of time to be able to say, hey, this is either not going to happen or it's not looking likely, or here's how things are going to be restricted, or whatever it is. It wouldn't be a last minute thing.
I also have a concern, a concern might be too strong, but just a thought about, you know, we're always trying to reach out to the public, reach out to the public. I mean, there may be a fair amount of the public who won't show up because of this situation and say, I didn't get a chance because of this situation to voice, do you know what I mean? You know, so I think there's, not only is there the health concerns of having, you know, 50 some odd people or whatever it's going to be in, in one space, there's also the, I guess the concern is if it doesn't end up being that many, people would say, I curse you coronavirus, I didn't get a chance to, you know, speak my mind, you know?
But given the topic of that next meeting, wouldn't it be wise, I mean, wiser if that's a decision that, you know, the town takes, there's no meetings or whatever, just to postpone it, you know?
So what is the alternative?
To what?
Part of the postponement.
Well, and this is why I say, I personally would, I didn't, I wouldn't be in favor of making a decision prior to seeing what's happening regionally and locally, because there could very well be a decision saying, yeah, no.
Make it rough, make it rough, yeah. Right, I mean, if you look at how quickly things have changed in the last 24 to 48 hours, I mean, you know, we could, it keeps going exponentially like that, I mean, Monday or Tuesday, the decision could be made for us or it might be a very easy decision.
Yeah, I mostly just wanted to recognize it and I'm glad you brought it up.
But, right, I mean, but should we set, like, you know, should we, at a minimum, if nothing's happened, should we touch base a week from today?
I would say a week before.
Say a weekend at a time would be good.
So I can, I can say that there is a meeting that is scheduled for Monday morning at 9:00. You're right, things have been changing much more rapidly the last 24 hours. I suspect that we'll know something after that meeting, if not before.
Internal meeting in Shelburne or something?
It's a, it's a meeting of department heads. So it's a, it's a Shelburne-specific meeting. But there, as Jason had said, and I copied, I copied committee chairs on some correspondence earlier today, there's already discussions of things like the non-statutory committees going on hiatus. One of, yeah, so anyway, there are a lot of different ideas being floated and I think, I think decisions, it'll become easier and easier to make somewhat seemed a while ago as tough decisions. And I suspect that they would be made Monday or Tuesday. I think that we will almost certainly know before next Thursday and that will give us a chance to let everybody know.
Right, so you, right, so that sounds like that's the next kind of touch point. Super.
I have one other thing. Since the photo of the planning commission on the website's severely out of date, Jason's the only one that's like, actually on it in that photo, that after the meeting, since we're all here, that we, that we take a photo after the meeting?
Oh, man.
We didn't, we didn't get a chance to wear our tuxedos and ball gowns, but we'll have to make do.
Is Kate still, still on it or when does she start on the slideboard?
She's painted to the slideboard.
Oh, it's already, okay.
Yep. She was elected and, and actually.
I wasn't sure based upon your email, where you made some comment, it made it sound like, oh, you're not done yet or something.
Well, and at that time, we, we didn't know.
Oh, okay.
It was this question of the TRB.
Yeah. Oh, right, 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 right.
Sure she's off that, too.
Yep.
That is.
What's your motivation, right? Ouch, ouch.
I'll tell you, Jason will fight hard for your ability to also serve on the TRB.
I sure will. I'm just making friends everywhere.
So does that mean there's an opening on the, on the planning commission?
There is an opening on the planning commission currently. And there were a couple of names that were being tossed around and people were looking into it, I just need to follow up. But if, if anybody has anybody in mind, I mean, you know what the role is and what backgrounds are helpful. And, and also, I didn't want to get ahead of myself, we had also briefly spoken about saying something for Kate, is that?
Yes, well, there are. Yes, well, there are a couple of different things, there was, I thought...
I didn't see it in that thing.
Oh, I thought I had left a folder here, there should be...
Oh! Is that, sorry, I thought that was the other stuff you left out.
Yes, so there's that, and I was just also gonna mention the select board meeting and the short-term rentals action, so if you want to deal with that now, or...
Yeah, I, I think we should do it, this is just a, a resolution recognizing Kate for her service, which, as long as, and we would all, we would just all sign it, we can sign it after it's read.
Whichever.
And seeing this now, with the multiple copies, would we, is one for her or for Trader?
I figured that somehow we could screw up, we could decide to edit it, and I could come back, there's no rush.
Oh, okay.
So I loaded two p, two...
Well, I would like to recognize it, because I realized in hindsight after the last meeting that I don't even think I said anything about her being in the, in the, on the ballot, and that that could potentially be her last meeting.
That's probably appropriate.
It probably wasn't, yeah.
Yeah, it probably was good to not, actually. Keep it separate.
Hindsight for the win.
Yeah.
So, all right, so go ahead and read this, and, so this is a resolution, whereas Kate Lally was appointed to the Shelburne Planning Commission in 2007, after having served as a member of Shelburne's Bike and Pedestrian Paths Committee, which she has in recent years rejoined, and whereas since becoming a planning commissioner, Kate has been a veritable powerhouse of planning ideas and energy in the community, and whereas Kate has twice played a critical role in the updating of Shelburne's comprehensive plan, and on multiple occasions assisted in the revision of the town's zoning and subdivision bylaws, and whereas Kate may best be known as a champion of form-based zoning implementation on which she has guided for over a decade, and in so doing has shaped policies that for years to come will enhance Shelburne's built and natural environments, and whereas on March 3rd, Town Meeting Day, Kate was elected to the Shelburne Select Board for a three-year term, thereby necessitating she step down from the commission, and whereas now is the time for Kate's colleagues to express hearty thanks and appreciation to her for years of commitment and service to the Planning Commission. Therefore, be it resolved that Kate's presence will be very much missed by fellow commissioners as well as by Shelburne residents and others, and we hereby extend to her our best wishes in her new role as a member of Shelburne's Select Board. And this will be...
Here, here.
Yeah, so, good stuff. We can sign this afterwards and make sure you got it. So yeah, definitely a lot of thanks, you put a lot of time into the Planning Commission.
13 years.
Yeah. And apparently now I'm the only person on the picture, which is gonna get changed.
Time to get a new picture.
Right.
Well, it's pretty wild, so, so Meg, you're relative, what, a year, two years?
No, June, May?
So there were a string of you that came in, all, and actually, yeah, if you were...
I mean, I don't know that I've been on a year, but maybe just about.
I think it was the end of last year, we had a lot of problems.
How about you, Stephen?
I started like one meeting before you.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So a quick update on the select board meeting, and they did adopt a, a motion that has to do with the Planning Commission taking a look at short-term rentals, and so this is something that I'm sharing with you, and basically look forward to the request coming to investigate this issue, hear from all sides on it, I guess I'll just leave it at